We'll have the pledge of allegiance. Yeah, well, Father, we come here again tonight, mindful of the many blessings that you provide us each and every day, and for that we give you thanks. We ask, Father, that you would be with those that are facing difficulties, whatever they may be. We know that you are in a position that you can offer them comfort and peace through your grace. Just ask that you would watch over us, bless us, keep us in the light that's before us. We ask that you would give us health and strength to rise again tomorrow and to go about your will. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item would be an adoption of the business agenda. If you've had an opportunity to review it, if someone is prepared to do so at this time, we'd need a motion to approve it as it is presented, if nobody has any conflicts.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, have a motion by Councilman Bell. Who was the second? Mr. Steinbach was the second. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye. All those know, the agenda will be approved. Under unscheduled public comment, we have Mr. McDaniel has signed up this evening. Mr. Jerry, good afternoon. Evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mr. Jerry McDaniel. I'm the official player. So, welcome. What we have here as a player. Mayor. You know what? You created a monster like me to expose a monster like you. I think I'm fit to be mayor, and I'm asking you to sign me. Anyone else up here that can spell coal ash, I'm asking you to say. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, we got that behind us now. We'll move on. Our next item is the approval of the city council minutes for the January 21st meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 21st, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes as drafted.
A motion by Councilman Bryant is the end of more discussion. There's seconds to the motion. Second by Mr. Jackson. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye. If those know, minutes will be approved and move on down to new business now. Consideration of the asphalt contractor bid. Mr. Chalka.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen Guest. I come before you tonight, turning my page, trying to get there, for your consideration of asphalt overlay contractor bid award for FY 2024-2025 project. We solicited bids and we received the solicited bids on January 30th at 10:00 a.m. in the first floor conference room at City Hall. The following three qualified bids were received by Wrightmire Machine Rentals, Fred Smith Company, and S.T. Rooting Company. The bid tabulation sheet is attached for your review and consideration. One staff comment, we recommend the lowest responsive bid by Wrightmire Machine Rentals Incorporated, and we're requesting for you to consider a motion to award a contract to the lowest responsive bidder and direct the city manager to execute a contract with Wrightmire Machine Rentals Incorporated for the FY 2024-2025 asphalt paving project. And I'll answer any questions you may have before I'm seated.
Were they all bidding on the same thing?
Yes, ma'am. They all received the same bid package.
Such a wide disparity in the price.
It was.
I just wanted to make sure.
For the public's information, the three bids received, there was Wrightmire Machine Rentals at $385,190. Fred Smith Company came in at $750,750. And S.T. Rooting came in at $538,475.
Can I ask you a question? Could you explain, I guess, to Councilman, what's the difference between the double seal and the single seal on the asphalt?
I don't know that I know the technical difference, but I would assume that they were trying to seal it twice.
Can you explain why one company, for instance Wrightmire, has put 2963 for the tonnage and Fred Smith's got 3755? Is that just their estimate of how much it's going to take?
That is an estimate based on how they calculated the asphalt.
But, you know, it's a lot of difference.
It is.
You know, the other two, the other 2975, only 12-ton difference.
Yeah, I don't want to make an assumption. I just know what they did.
Does this low bid fit into what we have in the budget?
It does not. It's actually higher. So, we've got, I believe, $280,000.
$280.
$280. And so, we have the raw information in the bid sheet as to how much they bid on each street, so we're just going to have to pick $280,000 worth of street surfacing, and this is a typical thing that we do each time we receive these bids.
Would it usually like to keep our zone checklist to determine which ones you bid?
There's a lot that goes into that determination, but to keep it, in layman's terms, the worst streets that are in the worst shape, we're going to keep them at the top of the list. We're just going to have to pick and choose. Some streets are not far from getting down to below the asphalt. The cracks are really wide, especially after the latest weather events that we just had. That's when it really, you can feel it in the ride on the street. As soon as the snow melts, you can see how the streets real bumpy. Now, they will relax, but you can tell that there's been damage to the base of the street.
So, what you're saying where that erosion has probably been the greatest of these asphalt, that's...
That's part of it, Councilman, yes. Water intrusion into the base of the asphalt is a big deal, and there's a few of these streets that's never had a resurface. It's the original asphalt, like in some of the cul-de-sacs and places like that.
Okay, if we don't have any more questions, we need a motion to move forward.
Mayor, I'd like to consider a motion to award the contract to the lowest responsive bidder and direct the city manager to execute a contract with Wrightmire Machine Rentals Incorporated for the fiscal year 2024-2025 asphalt paving project.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Strickland and a second by Councilman Bell. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye. If those know, the motion will be approved. Thank you, Mr. Chalka. 6B, I call on our city attorney, Mr. Davis.
All right, so the subject of this discussion is going to be about crossing guards for the schools within the, the public schools within the city of Runic Rapids city limits. And if council recalls back in September, there were some issues about coverage and some public concerns about crossing guards and if the system that we had was the best possible system for making sure that the children there crossing at those, across those public streets were kept as safe as they could be. And there's, you know, there's not really a, when you're dealing with two public boards, it makes it kind of difficult to kind of have these discussions. Myself and the city manager and Sergeant Baggett? Captain Baggett. I knew I was going to get his rank wrong. I have trouble keeping track of it, of police ranks sometimes. Captain Baggett met with the school back before the end of the calendar year, and we discussed some different options. But now, as we're getting into the, into the latter half of our fiscal year, as we're moving into the beginning of the calendar year, we're going to be moving into budgets here at the city relatively soon. And so, as part of that, I wanted to kind of bring this issue back to council's attention to get some direction on some possibilities here and to maybe discuss some different, a proposal that I've kind of come up with, that I'd like to, council to consider before, and to give us some direction on before we kind of take that back to the school district and begin negotiations. At the end of this, even if council agrees with some or all of what I'm going to say, we're not asking for council to make a motion and approve an agreement that council hasn't seen because I haven't drafted it yet. But really, what we're looking for is some guidance from council as far as moving forward and maybe some kind of instructions so that we can kind of take that to the school board and kind of continue this process. Because like I say, you know, we're going to get into budgeting soon, and I think it's better to do it now before we're dealing with budgets and all that entails. So, the last time that we talked about this in September, the school district had made a proposal. I don't think the school board had passed it at that point, but their proposal was essentially that they would hire a third-party contractor that would provide crossing guard services, and they wanted the city to cover some portion of that, and council rejected that. The current, before I kind of move into what my proposal is, just to remind you of what the current system is. The way that the current system works is, is there are four schools here in the city that have, that are, normally there's crossing guards at. The way that those are provided for is the, we have a system where our law enforcement officers, when they are off-duty, provide those crossing guard services. And so, it's off-duty work where we've got, we're asking officers who have worked, presumably worked full shifts, to sign up voluntarily for this duty. That may have been a good system 10 years ago, 15 years ago, but the modern way that the workplace is, the lives that our officers want to be able to live and see their families and other things, make it where this kind of off-duty work isn't as attractive. And so, when the school year started, there were some issues as far as coverage. And I think that when we discussed this back in September, one of the things I told council is, and I still agree with this, is that we have no duty to provide these services to the school. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't consider trying to help another public board out within the city. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't have concerns for the children that are crossing those streets and the families that are, that are driving through those areas and the traffic and all the other things that are kind of involved in that. You know, of course, we have a police department in this city, and one of their functions is public safety. And so, while we have no liability for anything that would occur there if there were no crossing guards, I do think that it is a public safety concern, and I do think it's something that council should consider and balance the different, the different kind of issues with it. I know one of the other things that certainly has been discussed, and, you know, I don't think there's any reason to hide this issue. We have a substantial part of the city, city residents who pay city taxes who do not get the benefit of the city schools because of the way that those jurisdictions are drawn. That is what it is. And I understand that is a, that could possibly be a concern as well to council and to the citizens of Runic Rapids. All of that said, that's all the context for where we get to here. One of the things that our former police chief, Chief Guyant, had brought to council's attention last year was the ability under the general statutes to designate something called traffic control officers. A traffic control officer, at least as they're kind of conceived under that statute, are not law enforcement officers. They are non-law enforcement officers who are designated traffic control officers under the statute, and they get powers to control traffic. And as employees of a jurisdiction, you know, they could be given indicia, and by indicia I mean uniforms, you know, vehicles with wraps, to give them some kind of appearance of authority to the public. And the public would be required to obey their traffic directions, and then if they didn't, they could be subject to arrest and citation and all the ways that, you know, we cite individuals for breaking the law under North Carolina law. What I would propose for, what I would propose for council to think about is to consider in our new budget, creating two new city positions. And I'll talk about how those are compensated and how I propose that in a second. But creating two new city positions that would be part-time traffic control officers. They'd be designated under that statute. They would not be law enforcement, so it would not have to pay into law enforcement retirement and comply with all those different things that are applicable there. And essentially, what they would do is they would help bolster the current system we have of off-duty officers. So, of course, as I said before, we have four public schools within the school district. If we create two positions, I don't think it would be anything that we would have to maintain permanently. It could be something that we try out on trial basis for a year through a negotiated agreement with the school district. And put that out there as a, as a way to try to bolster the system that we already have in place to make sure that we've got coverage and to make sure that there is coverage at those intersections. And, you know, one of the things that the school brought up in our discussions, and I can understand this, and I would, if I was their attorney, I would be taking this same approach, is that they have liability concerns about hiring their own crossing guards and putting them out there. And that is, that is one of their big concerns. If we're having the liability discussion, I'll tell council what I probably said back in September, but what I certainly said to them is, my opinion is, is that when a law enforcement officer is out there working off-duty, a city law enforcement officer, if some occasion happens, if somebody comes blazing through and commits a criminal action such as striking a child, failing to obey their directions, that at that point, the officer becomes an officer of Runic Rapids, even if he's off-duty. And so, if that officer is injured, it's our Wartman's Comp claim. If that officer, despite the fact he's off-duty, if that officer acts outside of his authority and does something that makes him liable under the show of authority with that badge and being out there as an off-duty officer, that's still our problem. We still have liability for that. So, if we create traffic control officers and they're city employees, I don't think that we're, and they're on duty with us technically, I don't think we're accepting any more liability than we already have. And in fact, because these would be part-time individuals and because so many things like Wartman's Comp are adjudged based on your wages and how much you're getting paid, if those positions aren't getting compensated as much, your liability isn't as much with this scenario that I'm proposing. So, I think that if we went down that road, that with respect to these two positions, that would, rather than the school coming out and asking to, and having to hire those individuals, that maybe quiets their liability concerns. Now, in exchange for that, what I would suggest is, is that the city asks the school to fund the full cost of those positions to the city. And so, essentially, if you kind of put it in two categories of what the city gets and what the school gets, my thinking would be is, you know, we don't really have a change in liability from our side than what we already have. It actually is, to some extent, depending on how you look at liability, may actually be a benefit to us. But certainly, they're accepting no liability, but on their side, they're getting the coverage that they want. We're bolstering this system that is informal and seems to be kind of, at least at the beginning of the year, was kind of straining at the edges. And on the other side, you know, we are not having to budget city funds to pay for their crossing guards, if that makes sense. That is, you know, they would still continue the off-duty system they have, bolstered by these traffic control officers, which they would, which my proposal would be is, you know, subject to city council approval, would also be, and subject to their approval, of course, too, that they would cover those costs to the city. And like I said, that's a compromise that it seems to me is fair to both sides. You know, two, it kind of communicates to the public, and maybe this is kind of going outside of my role as city attorney, but, you know, I think it communicates to the public that we do value the, we do understand the concerns here and that regardless of what we have to do and what we can do, we are trying to work towards some kind of solution that everybody can live with. So, I realize that's a lot to digest. So, I'll kind of turn it over to you guys, so subject your questions. That's all that I kind of had prepared to talk about. I'd like to know your thoughts, and if it is something where, at the end of this, you know, after you've had your discussions, if it is something where you say, all right, you know, we want you to go and start kind of negotiating something, kind of to that effect, you know, ideally what we would do is we'd reach out to the school system, you know, I'd reach out to their attorney. We'd send drafts back and forth, and then, of course, before anything is agreed to by either board, it would have to come before both public boards, and both public boards would have to pass it. So, one way or the other, you're not binding yourselves to anything. You're more kind of giving us, showing us kind of what your thoughts are at this stage. So, that's all I have. It's up to your questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Captain Baggett, member of the school officials, did he have, did they, did he come back with a recommendation?
I think he was pretty much on board with both of us. I know we've had some discussions since then as well.
So, are we looking at a crossing guard, a man, and one, a child, and then a police officer on Bowling Road? Is that what we were looking at?
That's kind of what we would think. One of the things, so I'm going to answer that question, but I'm kind of, I'm going to get to it. So, in our discussions with the school system, I think everybody agrees that every school is important, and I think, without putting words in the school's mouth, I think the Runic Rapids Greatest School District would take that position, and certainly, you know, we don't want to kind of draw distinctions, but the needs of Belmont are, to me, the most acute, and they're acute for two reasons. Number one, that is where the youngest children go, but then also, all of us are familiar with the, with Runic Rapids and the streets and the way that folks drive, and the location of Belmont makes, and the fact that you, that on one end of Bowling Road, you're essentially coming out of country driving, you're going from a 45 mile per hour speed limit to a 35 and then to the school zone, with very few stop signs or stoplights or anything kind of slowing traffic down on that road. I think that for those reasons and others, Belmont is the most acute. And so, I think that as we negotiate this, you know, the priority that different crossings are given will be definitely something that the school needs to have input in, but it just seems to me that Belmont would be the most acute. And certainly, it may be something where in that agreement, we can say, you know, hey, there's a tiered system to this, that priority will be given to, if that's the, and, you know, I would say too, you know, I think that the individuals that go there by the school every day and also our law enforcement officers are probably going to know that better than a lot of us, certainly than I do, kind of day-to-day and know those concerns. I think in those discussions, we can set up a priority system, and if the priority needs to be that, well, if Belmont is the most acute, we want our off-duty law enforcement to go there first, so be it. We can write that into it. You know, and kind of do it that way, or if it's, you know, if it's a, I know that sometimes it seems like there's, based on the way the old system has worked, sometimes there are officers that specifically say, hey, I want to work this certain school. So, you know, that may be part of it as well. And, you know, one of the things too is, I'd like, as part of this, I would like to make sure that we've got a good system for kind of communication between the school district and the city, because I think a lot of folks, especially probably parents of school-aged children, just assume that everybody knows what the school schedule is and pays attention to that. That's not necessarily the case when you've got, when you don't have school-aged children and you've got a bunch of other things that you're kind of paying attention to. And so, I think as part of this, you know, maybe having somebody that is kind of the coordinator, so to speak, and in charge of kind of notifying, you know, and maybe you need, maybe you need somebody, even if it doesn't come with any kind of change in pay or any other duties, but somebody that's kind of designated is, okay, this is your position in the police department. You coordinate this and make sure we're all on the same schedule so we don't have an officer showing up. You know, if you've got a delayed release or some, or if you've got a early release, you don't have an officer expecting to show up at 3:00 when they really need to be there at 1:00 or 12:00.
I've got one more question.
So, yeah, I think, I hope that answered your question. I know there's a lot of talking to get there.
So, the two crossing guards, they would be permitted to take a police call and park there too, and with the blue lights running there, though they were not police officers, they were crossing guards, that would be allowed?
Yes, they could.
Okay.
We could figure out how to make that work, even if it's, even if it's something where we have to, you know, rewrap an older police vehicle. I mean, obviously, the, some of our police vehicles, depending on, and I know that Chief Phillips can speak probably more to this, but, you know, some of our police vehicles, if they're out on patrol regularly, are enduring a lot of, a lot of wear and tear. Presumably, crossing guard vehicles for these part-time positions will not have that amount of wear and tear on them. But as a show of, as a show of authority, I think it's definitely something that I would encourage. Because I think that, you know, I mean, I think all of us as, certainly as adults, we're, and even as children, we're programmed to, by culture, to respond to those blue lights being on the side of the road. And so, I do think that would be worthwhile, and like I say, we could facilitate that in some way, and I think at very little cost to the city.
And maybe even two, just the two cars that are assigned to that, just to thought, just leave that car at the school, and the crossing guard goes to school, he has keys to the car, he pulls it up to the crossing site, and when he's done, he just reparks the car and leaves.
That's right. Gets in his personal vehicle, goes home.
Goes back and forth from the police station and that sort of stuff. I think that would work well too, but that's my concern.
You know, the important thing to, the important thing would be is, you know, even though, even though these guys may not be law enforcement officers, they're law enforcement officers in everything as name as far as whether the public has to obey what they're, what they're telling them to do, and...
They just don't have power of arrest.
Exactly. And, you know, and, you know, if somebody comes through and does something unfortunate or something stupid... stupid, they're not going to be able to do anything more than a law enforcement officer be. They're going to pick up the radio and call and get somebody there that can respond to it. And so, you know, to me, what it really needs to be is the show that is the show of force and the show of authority to let folks know, "You've got to obey this." And like I say, as far as their directions, as far as stopping traffic, you know, when kids can cross, things like that, they're going to have to obey them just like they do a law enforcement officer. And in the moment, you know, I'd -- my thinking would be, is that if you do all that, that the average person pulling up to there is not going to have that calculus to even make the distinction.
They won't.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
The four officers off-duty that are working now, are they being paid by the...
They're being paid by the school.
By the school.
The school has a line in their budget that they pay for them out of. And like I say, that's one of the reasons why I say, you know, if this protection is being provided specifically to the schools and we're essentially creating these, we're really creating these positions for their benefit, my thinking would be that the school would need to pay for that. And as diplomatically as I can say, we're kind of helping them kind of come to a solution and they're helping us with a solution for the public as well. So, I don't want it to be like, you know, we're sitting here kind of, you know, saying, "This is what -- it's our way or the highway." But, you know, I do think we, both entities need to kind of work towards a solution and just because of the nature of our ability to, you know, have a police department and our police chief's ability to designate traffic control officers under that statute, you know, arguably, you know, we got to take the first step. So...
The traffic control officers, would they be covered under our liability?
Yes.
Okay. Even though they're part-time?
Yes, that's correct. And it goes back to what I was saying before, is even now with the off-duty officers, even though they're off-duty, the second something happens, my position is, and I think the position of a lot of city attorneys and our liability carriers would be, is that at that point, they become our issue, even if they're off-duty. And that's by virtue of the fact that they're law enforcement officers.
You're talking about full-time law enforcement officers.
Yes.
I'm talking about traffic control.
Yes, yes. And so what I'm saying is, is that I don't think that we're, I don't think that we're getting any kind of new liability from doing this, but because liability seems to be a concern for the school system, and it would be if I was in their shoes, I think this helps solve that problem.
But also based on what you're telling us, that even though they're under our policy, the school will pay that cost?
That would be what I would suggest.
Okay.
And like I say, all this is subject to me drafting an agreement. I really wanted to get some direction from council before we kind of do that. And, you know, I'm sure the school will have some input into those pieces too.
Okay. If there are no more questions, we do need a motion to make this move forward.
I'd like to make a motion to consider authorizing the city manager and city attorney to turn in negotiations with Roanoke Rapids Greater School District regarding the creation of city traffic control officers to serve as crossing guards at Roanoke Rapids Greater School District.
Okay. Motion is by Councilman Bill and seconded by Councilman Stainback. Is any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those know, the motion will be approved. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Trainum, your city managers report.
Okay. Good evening, Mary and council. Some notes are provided before you as well. I'll go over some of these too. Just as a reminder, our strategic planning and economic development workshop with the Hayes Group Consulting, which is funded by our RC2 grant award, that training will be -- or the workshop will be on, in two weeks from tomorrow, on Wednesday at Chaloner Recreation Center. I'll have some more information coming out for you soon too. And I put tentative timing on there, but we will not go that late, I promise. This week, or starting in, excuse me, starting in February, the fire department will participate in live burn exercises at their training ground on Henson Street. Each week, one of the three shifts will receive their training that's required annually. And we'll let you know when those will occur. There could be some smoke or some things nearby, but their annual training will be conducted this month. Tomorrow and leaving, or leaving tomorrow and returning on Friday, three members of the department will be going down to Florida to the fire engines manufacturing plant to conduct the final inspection for the new truck. This truck was funded using funds that were offset from the American Rescue Plan, so it was actually the first one ordered, but the second one to arrive. Once the inspection is completed and all those items are addressed, the truck will be sent to Rocky Mount for equipment outfit before it comes to Roanoke Rapids in the next couple of months. You may notice going by the fire department that there is an ambulance out in the parking lot or near the truck bay. The fire department is conducting emergency vehicle driving training this month and so the, as part of an EMT certification program through the community college. And they're gearing up to plan for the annual veterans breakfast that will be in May this year. Parks and Recreation, just want to make a note that they held a basketball game for the adult daycare group members that visit the facility on a weekly basis. And I think it was a real memorable experience for all people who were involved and the Parks and Recreation staff went out of their way to make it really special for these participants and discussing additional options for special need programming. There are some Valentine's or February events going on. Valentine's Cupid Hoop Shoot at TJ Davis will be on February the 12th, an opportunity for family and kids to get together and on the basketball court. The wood carving classes will begin February 20th at the senior center and a ping-pong tournament will be at TJ Davis on February 21st. The New Toyota dealership, if you haven't ridden down 10th Street lately, the New Toyota dealership has received its CO and they have relocated outside of city limits to our planning and zoning jurisdiction on Premier Boulevard. A pre-application meeting has been requested with the Development Review Committee to review a proposed 7-Eleven store at the site that was formerly a Shoney's and Carolina BBQ restaurant near the intersection of Old Farm Road and Julian Alsbrook Highway. The employee position classification and compensation study that the MAPS group was contracted to work on, they are still in the middle of their assessment. They've received all of the surveys and the next step is for them to conduct the desk audit interviews with representative employees in each position classification. The interviews will begin the week of February the 12th and we anticipate receiving a recommended pay plan with proposed implementation cost estimates in March. And a presentation will be made to the city council, or excuse me, to the city council likely in early April. Our fiscal year 2026 budget planning is officially underway. During the month of February, departments will be preparing their budget requests, including all departmental and capital expenditures, to submit to my office and to the finance director by Monday, March the 3rd. We will have city council work sessions that will be scheduled during the month of April and will, during our next council meeting, will have a calendar proposed to provide you with some of those budget procedures leading up to adoption on June the 17th during our second June meeting. Public Works staff are recovering from January's winter wrath of storms back-to-back, so they're catching up on some other things. We've had, we realized we have many new employees, it was our first snow experience in cleaning and treating roadways, and just want to say our Public Works Department did an outstanding job in getting the streets cleared during those events and making it so that normal operations, not just for us, but at the schools and at other community destinations, were safe for travel. And with the police department, just, also just to note with Public Works, loose leaf collection does continue through February. Alleyways are usually at the very end of the collection route due to the most recent snowstorms and stuff. We got a little bit behind, but they are still collecting loose leaves in front of houses. And then the police department, we have three new employees. Two will be going to BLET, starting this month at Nash Community College. And Officer Stevenson was certified and is now in his field training. And the police department is looking forward to welcoming Chief Lawrence Wiggins. He'll begin his full-time employment on March 10th due to his relocation efforts from South Carolina and we're looking forward to welcoming him here. He's made a couple trips for pre-employment exercises and paperwork and so I know everyone's anxious, but he'll be here before we know it. Subject to any questions you have, that concludes my report.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the city manager? Okay. Thank you for your report. Under other business, we have a closed session to discuss a legal matter with the city attorney as allowed by the general statute. We need a motion to go into that closed session. Think you need to state the statute also.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter with the city attorney as allowed by North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11a3.
Okay. Motion on the floor by Councilman Stainback, your second to his motion. Seconded by Mr. Jackson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We go into...